Well, good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the January 10th, 2017 meeting of the Board of Commissioners. And I'd like to start out this meeting with an invocation by the Reverend Christopher Chappell of the Grace Community Christian Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Officer Alex Marks. Officer Marks is with the Cobb Police Department as part assigned to the precinct one day shift. So Reverend Chappell?
Good morning to everyone. Those of you who would like to stand, please stand. Spirit of living God, together of the Most Highs, we gather here today. We thank you for your presence in this room. We thank you for your power. Oh God, we pray that wisdom will prevail. We pray that our words will be seasoned with love. We thank you now that as we reason together, you will be glorified. We thank you for the well-being of every family that's represented in this room. We pray for those that are in our hospitals. We pray for those who are making decisions about our future in government, religious, and in our schools. We thank you as we gather here today. You be glorified and that through our actions, we'll build better relationships and that the work that needs to be done for our county, for our city, for our state, for our country, will be done in excellence. In Jesus' holy and precious name, we pray, amen and amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank Reverend Chappell for those kind spiritual words and also Officer Marks for leniency and the Pledge of Allegiance. Just an admin note here. We're going to be moving Tab 5, which is the Parks Bond Issue, up to now Tab 2. So the importance of the issue to many people in this county is of such import that the Board discussed moving it up so that we can address that immediately after the public comment. So here's what we'd like to do. Ms. Dantz, how many people have we signed up for public comment this morning?
There are four signed up and three on this issue.
Okay. So what we'd like to do is for the three people that are going to be discussing the Parks Bond Issue, we'd like them to speak two, three, and four. And whoever is on the other issue, speak first this morning. So whoever wants to talk about a non-Parks Bond Issue, if you address the microphone and make your comment, and then after you had your comments, then we'll bring up the people who are supporting, who want to address the Parks Bond Issue. And then after those comments, then we'll bring up new Tab 5, the new Tab 2, and we'll address the issue with the Parks Bond. So is everybody clear on that? I'm not sure I'm clear on that, but... Okay, good. So the member who would like to address the non-Parks Bond Issue, if they'd approached the microphone, please?
If I may, that's Ray Higginbotham. If you come forward, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. My name is Ray Higginbotham. I want to welcome you to the Cobb County Commission personally. I'm here to speak on interest expense on retainage. I'm a certified fraud examiner and construction auditor. Formerly was Southern Company, Houston Lighting and Power Company, and I was the assistant controller of Beers Construction Company for five years. In many of our contracts on water projects and other projects, we have this item called interest expense on retainage. This is a line item here indicating that we're paying interest to contractors. This is strictly front-end loading and pure pork, as far as I'm concerned. In all my years of lot of construction contracts, I've never seen interest expense on retainage. And I did a little research, if you want to... Can we put this up here? Let's see. All right. We have a preliminary estimate of $400,000 and then new replacement sewer lines, unidentified, of $247,414, bringing it to $647,000. The original estimate was $400,000. The contract was 628... Or the lowest bid was 628,279. That's quite a bit over the original estimate. And one question I have is why we're not, you know, why wasn't this rebid to get it closer to the original estimate? And that's one question I have. This interest expense on retainage, it only shows $1,570, but there are materials and supplies which the contractor provides, not Cobb County normally, and a contingency of Contingencies are non-performance items. Interest expense, that's a non-performance item. And in my opinion, they should not be associated with contracts because it allows contractors to bill us for...
Excuse me, Mr. Higginbotham. Could you just speak a little bit closer to the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
We're good now. We're perfect.
Okay.
We heard your comments before that. You don't have to... We won't restart the clock.
Restart the clock? Okay. Okay. This publication is called Strategic Finance. It's put out by the Institute of Management Accountants every month. I've been a member since 1976 of IMA. And Strategic Finance particularly has...
Come to the microphone, Mr. Higginbotham.
I'm sorry. Under federal guidelines, interest is not allowable. This article here shows unallowable cost, typical unallowable cost, under FAR Part 31, OMB Circular A21, and OMB Circular A122. In each listing, you can come down and see interest, interest and other financial cost under FAR 31. And Cost Accounting Standard 405, accounting for unallowable costs, says this standard emphasizes how unallowable costs accounted for. See Table 3. Unallowable costs must be identified so many companies have a unique identifier in their chart of accounts to ensure that such costs are captured. I've been told that there is a law on Georgia books that mandates that we pay interest to contractors, interest expense, interest on their retainage. Retainage is withheld by project owners, which Cobb County is the project owner. It stays in our bank account. It's not given to the contractor until he delivers the project, you know, a final affidavit and waiver of lien and final affidavit of completion, and then a certificate of occupancy is issued, in my opinion there, again, for what that's worth.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
My time is up.
Okay. What we'll do is we'll address two of the issues and we'll get back to you on this. One of them about the fact that it exceeded the original bid over cost estimate, all right? We also need to give you an answer about the state laws to why the retainage is an allowable expense in our contracting. But I hear your point and we owe you an answer and we have the minutes being taken and we'll get back to you on that, okay, sir?
But federal cost accounting standards...
Gotcha. I hear you. Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Roger Berkey. If you come forward.
I'm Roger Berkey from East Cobb and primarily wish to say a very heartfelt thank you. It's been a long struggle, unfortunately, with the Great Recession having set things back, but looks like we're about to get down to business and I certainly do appreciate that. I started campaigning for this sort of thing back in 1970. And my first appearance before Cobb County Commission was in that spring. I asked Commissioner, Commission Chairman Barrett, if Cobb County would consider a slight deviation in their plans for the sewer line down Rottenwood Creek. And if you've seen Rottenwood Creek, it's an exceptional natural asset, wonderful rock formations, beautiful gorge, known throughout Atlanta. Mr. Barrett's response, after I'd spoken for about 10 or 15 seconds and he discovered what I was about, was, "Mr. Berkey, we're not going to change our plans to save a tree. Sit down." I'm glad to see that the county's attitude has changed. Cobb County has wonderful green assets. If you look at Kennesaw Mountain and the Chattahoochee, the feds have done us a great service. But there's much still left and it's going fast. I noted on the news recently that the Chinese have decided this year to stop buying ivory because elephants are disappearing. I'm glad we're emulating the Chinese. We're realizing our green space is disappearing and we need to do something about it. We have an interesting example, green meadows out in West Cobb, gorgeous piece of farmland out there that we've set aside. There's a mountain you'll see if you look west towards Douglas County, Lost Mountain. It's still green. It's green because private money was found to save the east side of that mountain before it was developed. We can appreciate that and I hope the county will devote a little staff time somewhere, someone looking for these sources of free money that we can use to help the county tackle the rest of our green space needs. I'd like also to thank Paul Paulson, who, along with our previous Commission Chairman, well, not quite previous, along with Sam Olens, started the bond issue programs. We got our first 40. We're now looking to complete the next 40. And I do wish to emphasize the 40. It's great to see we're off to a good start and we'll try to accommodate the loss we suffered when funds or revenue streams were diverted towards the Braves Stadium instead of the green space. And I certainly hope we shall reach that goal quite soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berkey.
The next speaker is Cynthia Patterson. Come forward, please.
My name is Cynthia Patterson and I live in District 2. Thank you for today's agenda item, the supplemental bond resolution to fund $24.7 million to purchase green space and parks for the citizens of Cobb County. If this resolution passes today, citizens of Cobb County will celebrate a Board of Commissioners who honors the will of the people, who overwhelmingly voted for Park Bond 2008. We hope the full $40 million will be funded this year. Green space makes Cobb County a desirable place to live. Home values increase. Businesses locate where the quality of life is good. Air is cleaner. Water is cleaner. Hot summer temperatures are moderated. The risk of flooding is reduced. Citizens of all ages and incomes benefit year-round from more parks and green space. Access to parks and recreation create a sense of identity and community pride. Families and groups gather to socialize and connect with nature. Citizens rest and recharge, surrounded by natural sights, sounds, and scents. Children play outdoors, away from the distraction of electronic devices. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson.
The next speaker is Roberta Cook.
Good morning, Commissioners and Chairman Weiss. Welcome to your new position on the Board. My name is Roberta Cook. I live in Mabelton, Georgia. I'm active in a citizen group called the Cobb Parks Coalition. Our website is cobbparkscoalition.org. We are citizens from every Cobb County district who have united to support the $40 million Cobb County Park Bond funding, a referendum to buy green space parkland for Cobb County, which was approved by the voters via the ballot box in November 2008, almost nine years ago. Since 2008, the $40 million Park Bond was sidetracked due to the downturn of the economy and subsequently due to the diversion of taxpayer dollars to finance the Braves Stadium. Last year, the Park Bond program was revived by accepting new property nominations, but remained unfunded. This year, we expect delivery of the $40 million under the new leadership of Chairman Weiss. Today, we're anxious to learn how you will accomplish it. I appreciate your commitment to fund and implement the $40 million Park Bond acquisition program and thank you for including it on the agenda today. In closing, for those in the audience who'd like to learn more, you can check out our website at cobbparkscoalition.org.
Thank you, Ms. Cook.
That concludes your public speakers.
Now, if everybody would go to Tab 5, which is the new Tab 2. Mr. Volkman, I believe you have the floor?
Morning, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. I'm here today to present the Parks Bond Agenda Item. The purpose of this agenda item is to adopt a supplemental bond resolution to approve the issuance of one or more series at one or more times of the Cobb County, Georgia General Obligation Parks Bond in aggregate principal amount not to exceed $24.7 million to finance the acquisition of county land located in the county for the use of public parks in perpetuity and for other related purposes. Before I get to the recommendation, I wanted to bring to your attention kind of the next steps and some additional information related to the Parks Bond. We are talking about the $24.7 million, which was the legal amount that we're allowed to issue. There will be some issuance costs associated with this. Now, we are still determining which is the best way to issue the bond, whether it will be a public offering, which is typically what we do for a lot of our geo-debt, or a bank loan, which is a direct loan. The issuance costs will be paid out of the bond proceeds or any additional principal amounts, so it would not be additional out-of-county expense, but those could range, depends on the type of offering we issue, up to $150,000. The public offering has a little slightly higher cost, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention as we move forward and then also call to your attention that if this is approved today, that would start our 90-day window to issue these bonds. Okay? Any...
So I'd like to move to adopt the supplemental bond resolution as stated in our text. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Could we start with Mr. Cupid?
Sure. Thank you, Chairman. This has been a long time coming for those who have been actively supporting the bond and want to share that I am in support of this action today. When this initially came up to the Board, I was supportive because of the will of the people supporting this via referendum. However, at our last meeting, when this came up for a vote, when I did not support it, it was not because this was not the right thing to do, but in principle, I thought it was just for us to recognize that our parks are maintained by part-time employees, which were not being considered at a time for our pay and compensation study. Since then and today, there has been some development on our Board to support both part-time and full-time employees as part of the pay and class study. And therefore, I have no qualms at all in supporting this. And I'm very glad that we are all in support of this initiative and I'm glad that those who are in the audience, who continued to come here at each meeting, did not lose heart and that you believed in us to do the right thing, that we're doing it today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you, sir. Just wanted to clarify a few things, Mr. Volkman. It will take up to 90 days to issue these bonds. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
All right. And this was my reasoning when we brought this forward last year, is that it would take 90 days. And my thought process was that we're in the process of examining these properties. Some of them are completed, some are still ongoing. But once they are chosen and prioritized, then there's a process that goes through as far as appraisals, offers, back and forth like any type of real estate. And my thought process all along was to have the money ready as soon as that property was available. And if we waited, although it was only 30 days, that would give us extra time to have the money in hand. So you're confident within 90 days and hopefully we can finish our due diligence and select those properties, we will have the money in hand if the property is available so we don't lose it to other sources that might be wanting to purchase it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I just want everybody to know that was our thought process up here and to try to shorten the 90-day window so that when we did find the property we wanted, we could purchase it right then and there. So that's my only comment, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Weatherford. Commissioner Burrow?
Thank you, sir. I too am excited that this has come forward again this year. It's way long overdue and I appreciate staff working with us to perform our due diligence and site visits with our schedule. Last year, that we've, some of us have completed and reviewed and turned in our lists. So I think the next step forward in the next 90 days will be for us to come up with a finalized list that we will be able to initiate and purchase properties for the parkland. I'd also like to thank the side staff, the Cobb Parks Coalition, Cantor Neighbors, and the public, the Sierra Club, and public support for this issue coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrow. Commissioner Roth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like Commissioner Cupid, I have always said that I supported the bond. Last year, when we, excuse me, when we talked about this, my reluctance to support it then was the fact that I thought it was a political vote. We had not gone through the process and to me, the process was important, that the Commissioners do their due diligence. And I think Commissioner Weatherford makes a good point about the 90 days. And Mr. Chairman, if you'll make some assurances that we will have a better idea of what we're going to purchase before the bond issue, then I will vote for this.
And you have my assurance in that regard, Commissioner Roth. As I was mentioning to some people here this morning, it would obviously not be appropriate for me to say I'm not supporting this bond when I made it part of my campaign. So the obvious answer is yes, I do support bringing this resolution as stated and I'll support it. But I think it's important also to realize that why we cannot fund the full $40 million. First of all, legally, if I understand correctly, Mr. Volkman, we're only, given the current legislation, we're only allowed to ask for $24.7 million.
That's correct, sir.
Okay. So the other $15.3 million is where we have to find that. And in order for me to do that, I would have to ask, we'd have to go back for another referendum. Why is that? Because it's principle. As we all know, I campaigned on the issue of the process in which we did not bring forth a referendum to discuss the purchase of SunTrust Stadium. So I can't very well have an issue on a larger scale and make an exception for something on a smaller scale. Principle's a principle. And I cannot support adding another $15.3 million to this proposal without going back to the people. So let's, what I would hope is that we've made an important first step. This is my 10th day in office and we've already brought this agenda forward, which gives you some idea of how important I thought this was, to get this on the slate, very important. My commitment to you is that we're going to be working ahead over the next few years to find the remaining amount to equal to $40 million. But I also want to be very, very emphasized that the millage rate is 6.66. The fact that I have agreed to make an exception on my campaign promise of not raising taxes in 2018, except for the Parks Bond, gives you an idea of how important I take this issue as. You're the only exception so far, and I intend out of that commitment that you will be the only exception where I'm agreed to raise our millage rate if we have to do that to fund the bond. And I want everybody to understand where I'm coming from. So with that, I'd like to bring the motion to a vote. Do I have a second?
Second.
Can I call a question? Please, please vote. And it's 5-0.
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome. I should adjourn right now.
It should be as good as it gets.
So with that, let's go to Tab, the original Tab 3, or original Tab 2, I'm sorry, which is the consent agendas. The, just for your information, for those who do not have a copy of the agenda book, all the consent agenda items will be scrolled down after the meeting on the screen. And also, of course, obviously, you can read about them on our website. And if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to provide you a copy with those agenda items. So that, I move that we approve the items on the Tab 2 as revised and authorized, and authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Having discussion?
Quick question.
Yes, absolutely.
Did we pull that one agenda item yesterday, sir? I don't really recall if we...
It's in the transportation.
Oh, we've got moved over discussion? Or...
Talking about, I think the one you're talking about is on the transportation tab.
Right.
But it's not on the consent agenda.
I'm sorry. I thought it was on the consent agenda. Got it. My mistake.
Okay, no problem. No problem. There's a lot of pieces today.
Yes.
Do I hear a second to the motion? Okay. All, please vote. There you go. And the motion passes 5 to nothing. And the Tab 3 to the Cobb County Transportation Agency, and I yield the floor to Mr. Wilkus.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager. Our first agenda item is to authorize amendment to previously authorized payment of construction administration fee to the Georgia Department of Transportation and approve a revised construction agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for the Bob Cowan Trunk Trail, Phase 2, Segment A, State PI Number 0010009, Cobb County Project Number D11L0, Cumberland Community Improvement District, Project Number CCID 1033. Bob Cowan Trail, Phase 2, Segment A, is an approved project in the Atlanta Regional Commission Plan 2040, Regional Transportation Plan designated as State PI Number 0010009 and ARC, Project Number CO-446. The Department is in receipt of a revised construction agreement from GDOT for the Bob Cowan Trunk Trail, Phase 2, Segment A. Under the terms of the revised agreement, the state will fund eligible construction costs up to a maximum amount of $4,988,400. The county will be responsible for a construction administration fee in the amount of $20,000. The CCID will be responsible for funding all construction costs exceeding the state maximum amount. Based upon bids received, the CCID's cost is estimated to be $1,240,488. We request the Board of Commissioners authorize amendment of previously authorized... We request the Board of Commissioners authorize amendment of previously authorized payment of a construction administration fee to the, to Georgia Department of Transportation. Approve a revised construction agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for Bob Callen Trunk Trail Phase Two Segment A State PI Number 0010009. Cobb County Project Number D11L0, formerly known as Cobb County Project Number TR474. Cumberland Community Improvement District Project Number CCID Number 1033. CCDOT Contract Number 00977. Authorize payment of a revised construction administration fee in an amount not to exceed $20,000 and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Rott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as a note, this is a continuation of a project that the board has been voting on, actually, that started in 2011. So make a motion to approve.
Second.
And then do we have discussion? Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, my concerns remain the same as they were yesterday. And between the agenda session and today, I haven't seen a prioritization of the 2005 SPOLOST or any dollars from the 2011. And would just ask that for any other item that comes back similarly, that, that be provided in advance and we can discuss any outstanding requests.
Yes, I think, Mr. Hankerson, if we could give all the commissioners that 2005 and 2011, a list of what's remaining out there.
We met with staff yesterday immediately after the commission meeting. We pulled together all the remaining projects and what funding is available. What I saw yesterday, did not have the funding. We'll, we'll be bringing that back to the board as well as the level.
And when, when can we expect that list?
We're working on the list for the 2005. 2011 is a little longer list. 2005, we should be able to have probably by the first of next week.
How, how many projects are on that list?
Well, there's a lot of projects on there that are retaining funds for utility relocation settlements and for right-of-way settlements. So we'll be putting that together. I mean, we're working on it right now, sir.
Okay. Is that acceptable for you, Commissioner Cupid, for early next week? Okay, all right. Thank you.
The list will also show all these, the status of each project, what is completed, what's remaining, what we didn't have funding available for. It'd be very comprehensive and we're working with Bill Volkman to make sure those numbers are verified. So I think it's pretty aggressive to have that by the first of the week. Okay.
Thank you, County Manager. And I would just share that once the list is received, it'll be helpful if we had a process of how we determine to move forward.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And we'll be doing, I'll be doing that in conjunction with the board.
Great.
And as soon as I get the information, I'll, I'll distribute that to all the commissioners. And we'll have a early ongoing discussion about those issues.
Very good. Thank you.
Any further discussion? You call a question?
Thanks, sir. Our next item is to approve a contract with Astor Group, Inc. for Bob Callen Trunk Trail Phase Two Segment A State PI Number 0010009. Cobb County Project Number D11L0. Cumberland Community Improvement District Number CCID-1033. CCDOT Contract Number 000977. Bob Callen Trunk Trail Phase Two Segment A is an approved project in the Atlanta Regional Commission ARC Plan 2040, Regional Transportation Plan designated as State PI Number 0010009 and ARC Project Number CO-446. The low bid of $5,495,690.77 from J.G. Leon Enterprises, Enterprises, Inc. was reviewed and found to be non-responsive as the contractor was unable to meet the DBE participation requirements of the contract. The second low bid of $6,228,888 from Astor Group was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsive. The completion date for this project is 720 consecutive calendar days from the issuance of the notice to proceed. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Astor Group, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $6,228,888 for the Bob Callen Trunk Trail Phase Two Segment A State PI Number 0010009. Cobb County Project Number D110, formerly known as Cobb County Project Number TR474. Cumberland Community Improvement District Project Number CCID-1033. CCDOT Contract Number 000977. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Rott?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Could you kind of like explain to me and to the audience the difference between the first and second items here? They both have Bob Callen. So what are we talking about here?
The first item is to approve the revised construction agreement with GDOT, which funds the major portion of the project. This is, this item is to actually approve the contract for the contractor to build the project.
What is DBE?
Disadvantaged Business Enterprise.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. I had alphabet soup in my mind there for a while. Any further discussion? Call a question?
This item is to approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC for intersection improvements of Barrett Parkway at Chestaime Meadows Parkway, Project Number X2324. CCDOT Contract Number 001038. Barrett Parkway at Chestaime Meadows Parkway is an approved project in the intersection improvements component of the 2016 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. The low bid of $433,909.30 from Glosson Enterprises LLC was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsive. The scheduled completion date for this project is 120 consecutive calendar days from the notice to proceed. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC in an amount not to exceed $433,909.30 for intersection improvements at Barrett Parkway at Chestaime Meadows Parkway, Project Number X2324. CCDOT Contract Number 001038. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow?
Yes, thank you. And thanks to staff in the Town Center CID for all the many projects going on in that area, and this will be a very important project as well. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question? Item four.
This item is to approve a contract with Baldwin Paving Company, Inc. for school zone improvements on Sandy Plains Road at Davis Road, Mountain View Elementary School. Project Number X2804. CCDOT Contract Number 001023. Sandy Plains Road at Davis Road, Mountain View Elementary School is an approved school zone improvements project in the 2016 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. The low bid of $980,902.85 from Baldwin Paving Company, Inc. was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsive. Bid tabulation consisted of $950,902.85 in roadway costs and $30,000 in water system costs. The scheduled completion date for the project is July 23rd, 2017. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Baldwin Paving Company, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $980,902.85 for school zone improvements on Sandy Plains Road at Davis Road, Mountain View Elementary School. Project Number X2804. CCDOT Contract Number 001023. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow?
Yes, thank you. Yesterday, we discussed having a public information open house with the school construction.
Yes, ma'am. This would be the second one. There was actually one held by the school board at the school in 2015.
Okay. Are we, do we have a date?
We don't have a date yet, ma'am.
Okay. Because we need, we need to do this before the construction begins.
Okay.
Which will be soon.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's, I'm glad to see the progress being made on the construction of the new Mountain View School. So with that, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Hankerson, let me make sure we get back to Commissioner Burrow about when we're going to have that open house.
We will.
Okay, thanks. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? I'll call a question. Okay, we have, for those who have a copy of the agenda, we have pulled agenda item number five. We had a number of issues yesterday that were unresolved. So we decided to pull that off for a later date. So we're going to go to item number six now.
Yes, sir. This item is to approve the supplemental agreement number one to the contract with Northwest Express, Express Road Builders, a joint venture for construction of the I-285 Multi-Use Bridge, Project Number TR494. CCDOT Contract Number 000951. The I-285 Multi-Use Bridge consists of a bridge spanning Galleria Drive, I-285, and Circle 75 Parkway to SunTrust Park. The total project length is approximately 1,110 feet. Supplemental agreement number one to the I-285 Multi-Use Bridge, a contract with newer in an amount not to exceed $449,128.2 is requested for project acceleration. At its December 15th, 2016 board meeting, the C.C. Cumberland Community Improvement District unanimously voted to increase its funding contribution for this project to cover the costs associated with this acceleration. We request the Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement number one to the contract with Northwest Express Road Builders, a joint venture in an amount not to exceed $449,128.2 for construction of the I-285 Multi-Use Bridge, Project Number TR494. CCDOT Contract Number 000951. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Rott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just kind of a brief explanation for the public. The, the bridge construction was delayed due to issues with the deck of the Galleria Authority. And as a result, the bridge was not going to be completed and, for opening day. The Cumberland Community Improvement District agreed to fund the, basically, the $450,000 to get the bridge finished in time. If there is no additional cost to the county, we just have to have the agenda item because the contract is with us. So motion to approve.
Any discussion? Call a question? Item number seven.
This item is to approve change order number one, number two, final to the resurfacing contract 2014-2 Local Roads South with Baldwin Paving Company, Inc. for resurfacing of county-maintained roads. Project Number E9140, CCDOT Contract Number 000763. Resurfacing is an approved component in the 2011 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. Construction is complete and change order number two, final to the contract with Baldwin, a savings to the project in the amount of $533,796.25 is requested due to variations between the original and final planned quantities. Project savings will be retained in the resurfacing component of the 2011 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. We, we request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number two, final to the resurfacing contract 2014-2 Local Roads South with Baldwin Paving Company, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $533,796.25 for the resurfacing of county-maintained streets. Project Number E9140, CCDOT Contract Number 000763. Authorize the chairman, and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Mr. Cupid?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Call a motion? Okay, item number eight.
Yes, sir. This item is to approve change order number one, final to the contract with W.E. Contracting Company, Inc. for emergency drainage system repairs on Smyrna Powder Springs Road, Project Number X2215. CCDOT Contract Number 001025. Drainage system improvements is an approved component in the 2016 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. Construction of the project is complete and change order number one, final to the contract with W.E. Contracting Company, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $983 is requested due to variations between the original and final planned quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one, final to the contract with W.E. Contracting Company, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $983 for emergency drainage system repairs on Smyrna Powder Springs Road, Project Number X2215. CCDOT Contract Number 001025. And authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Mr. Cupid?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call, any discussion? Call a question? Okay, item number nine.
Yes, sir. This item has been revised. This item is to approve supplemental agreement number two to the consultant services agreement with AECom Technical Service on addition, for additional engineering design services required for the I-285 Multi-Use Bridge, Project Number TR494. CCDOT Contract Number 000853. The I-285 Multi-Use Bridge consists of a bridge spanning Galleria Drive, I-285, and Circle 75 Parkway to SunTrust Park. The total project length is approximately 1,110 feet. The Galleria Authority has deemed it necessary to design and construct an elevator near the bridge tied into their parking structure. At their board meeting on October 31st, 2016, the Galleria Authority Board approved a budget not to exceed $500,000 for the addition of an elevator, which includes the costs associated with the design. We request the Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement number two to the consultant services agreement with AECom Technical Services, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $104,780.86 for additional engineering and design services required for the I-285 Multi-Use Bridge to be reimbursed by the Galleria Authority upon execution of a memorandum of agreement. Project Number TR494. CCDOT Contract Number 000853. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
What is the revision?
The revision is the funding. We're funding this out of the general fund.
Vice. Vice what? From where? Where's the, where were we originally going to take the money from?
We were originally going to fund it out of the 2011. Well, it's funded out of the Galleria Authority's commitment of the $500,000. Originally, this contract was funded out of the 2011 SPOLOST.
And now we're going to revise it to general fund?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's a loan, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I was going to just kind of point out that the, first off, this is monies that are going to be reimbursed by the Galleria Authority once the MOA, the memorandum of agreement is agreed to. But I think the more important thing is the fact that the change, I mean, there's been a lot of discussion about SPOLOST use on the bridge. And I think it's important to note that what's been changed on this is that instead of being funded from the 2011 SPOLOST, it's being funded by the general fund, which will be reimbursed by the Galleria Authority when they send us the money. So motion to approve.
Second.
Comment, Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, is this specifically coming out of the undesignated contingency?
It's coming out of the general fund fund balance. It'll go against the balance sheet and then be paid back before the calendar year, budget year end.
Okay.
Further questions? Call a question?
Yes, sir. This item is to authorize the advertisement for in-conduct of a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more to perform engineering design services for Chitium Hill Multi-Use Trail and to authorize issuance of requests for proposals to procure required services. Project Number X2404. State of Georgia Code requires the Board of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing prior to expending county funds of $100,000 or more to employ independent contractor or consulting firm to conduct an independent study or survey. The department anticipates awarding engineering design contracts that could exceed $100,000 for the Chitium Hill Multi-Use Trail Kennesaw Mountain National Battlefield Park Connector Project. We request the Board of Commissioners authorize the advertisement for in-conduct of a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more to perform engineering design services for Chitium Hill Multi-Use Trail Project Number X2404 and further authorize issuance of a request for proposals for task order work authorization to procure required services as shown in the attached list of additional upcoming projects for the first half of 2017.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Any comments? Call a question?
Yes, sir. This item is to approve project number X2105-TO Number 01 to the 2016 Master Task Order Contract with Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc. for engineering and design of Castile Road over Ponty Grove Creek, CCDOT Contract Number 000996. Castile Road over Ponty Grove Creek, previously identified as Sewell Creek, is an approved project in the Bridges and Culverts component of the 2016 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve project number X2105-TO Number 01 to the 2016 Master Task Order Contract with Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $317,570 for engineering and design of Castile Road over Ponty Grove Creek, previously identified as Sewell Creek, CCDOT Contract Number 000996. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Rott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim, this is a, just a design, not a design build, right?
I'm sorry?
This is a design only.
This is just a design.
So there'll be another agenda item that'll come forward for the contract once it's?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call a question? Number 11.
Number 12, sir.
12, thank you.
This is to approve project number X2307-TO Number 01 to the 2016 Master Task Order Contract with AECom Technical Services, Inc. for engineering and design of intersection improvements at Hicks Road at Concord Road. CCDOT Contract Number 000990. Hicks Road at Concord Road is an approved project in the intersection improvements component of the 2016 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve project number X2307-TO Number 01 to the 2016 Master Task Order Contract with AECom Technical Services, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $100,000. and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars for engineering and design of intersection improvements on Hicks Road at Concord Road, C C D O T, contract number zero 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 nine nine zero, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Mr. Cupid?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I want to thank you for bringing this item to my attention yesterday. In prior discussion, I want to emphasize that this last item states that there will be intersection improvements at that intersection with consideration for a roundabout, but that the goal is to minimize impact to the property owners that are there. And the way this agenda item is written, it does provide construction of a roundabout in lieu of adding turn lanes. And I should have asked for that to be modified per discussion yesterday, but for that, we consider for there to be intersection improvements to that intersection with consideration for a roundabout or addition of turn lanes based on the impact to the property, impacted property owners. I don't know how we can, how to go about revising that intent.
Change the motion.
Make a motion to amend.
Okay. Okay, so I move to amend the agenda item to state that, or to restate the last sentence of the funding paragraph, or the funding section, to provide Hicks Road at Concord Road improvements include consideration of construction of a roundabout or addition of turn lanes based on minimizing impact to impacted property owners. Is there a second?
There's a second? Just a little confused on the.
Sorry, we'll have comments, bud. No problem.
Okay.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes, I would just allow, I mean, I would recommend that you leave it as stated, roundabout in lieu of additional turn lanes or adding turn lanes as needed through engineering. The roundabout is going to be in lieu of turn lanes, or we're going to have turn lanes without the roundabout, if I understand it correctly. So it's.
I think they're both given, but I don't want to rely on my technical expertise. I think, or I don't want to.
You understand, Mr.?
Yes, I just want it to be stated in a way that makes it clear that both options should be on the table to minimize impact to the property owner.
I have some comments, but I'm going to wait to see if the other commissioners have some comments.
I was just going to say, just whichever method is used, roundabout or turn lanes, whatever's the least impact to the property owners.
And what we can say is just intersection improvements.
Yeah, whatever that's going to be.
Believe it or not.
I absolutely agree, because what I don't want to have happen here is that there's old, there's this famous saying in military silence means consent, unless we specifically address what it is our intent is, then there's this sort of dynamic that it'll roll out into a roundabout. And the clear intent here is that we don't want to have a roundabout unless the board knows that it's a roundabout. So.
And that the property, I'm sorry, Chairman.
Sure, absolutely. I get your point. They should be involved in the discussion, because what's, my experience has been is that the roundabouts that are here, they're not bad things, but the communication between the homeowners and the county building has been pretty poor. So the county's, my perception is the county's intent is to build a roundabout regardless of the consideration of the homeowners. And I want to make sure very clear that that's not going to happen. We have to make sure that the wording states that if it's going to be something other than just simple intersection improvements, and it's going to transform or morph into a roundabout, the board should be advised about that, specifically the commissioner who's impacted by this or constituents. Absolutely.
I can make this suggestion, Commissioner Cupid, that you add to your motion similar to what we do in zonings, where you say that before the final design is approved by D O T, that it come to the district commissioner.
Okay. I support that.
My second is amended.
Yeah.
Ms. Babery? Good on that? Okay, so any further discussion? Call the question? Great. Next item.
This item is to approve a utility relocation agreement with Georgia Power Company for preliminary engineering relocation of facilities on Sandy Plains Road at Davis Road, Mountain View Elementary School, project number X, two thousand and eight oh four, C C D O T, contract number zero zero one 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 four. Sandy Plains Road at Davis Road, Mountain View Elementary School is an approved project in the school zone improvements component of the two thousand and sixteen S P L O S transportation improvement program. Construction of this project will require Georgia Power Company to remove and relocate their existing facilities. Since the facilities may be located on Georgia Power Company easement, the cost of the relocation in an amount not to exceed three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars may be reimbursable by Cobb County. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a utility relocation agreement with Georgia Power Company in an amount not to exceed three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars for preliminary engineering and relocation of facilities on Sandy Plains Road at Davis Road, project number X, two thousand and eight oh four, C C D O T, contract number zero zero one 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 four, authorize the corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents, and a form substantially similar to the attached, and as approved by the county attorney's office.
Commissioner Burl?
Yes, thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve.
Any discussion? Call the question. Item fourteen.
Yes, sir. This item is to approve change order number one with Adaptive Microsystems LLC for Cumberland Area Traffic Cameras and Dynamic Message Signs, state P I number zero zero one five two oh four, Cobb County, project number X, two thousand and five oh seven, C C D O T, contract number zero zero one zero oh zero two zero. Cumberland Area Traffic Cameras and Dynamic Message Sign is approved project in the traffic management, traffic signals, and planning component of the two thousand and sixteen S P L O S transportation improvement program, and is designated as state P I number zero zero one five two oh four. Change order number one, in an amount not to exceed two thousand, two hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars, is requested to purchase nine additional lane assignment dynamic message sign as recommended by the Transportation Management Plan for the SunTrust Park Special Events. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one with Adaptive Microsystems LLC in an amount not to exceed two hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars for Cumberland Area Traffic Cameras and Dynamic Message Signs, state P I number zero zero one five two oh four, Cobb County, project number X, two thousand and five oh seven, C C D O T, contract number zero zero one zero two zero, authorize the corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Mr. Rodd?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last Friday at the Braves Advisory Group, there was a lot of questions by folks about the Transportation Management Plan, and one of the discussions we had is that it is a living document as we move forward, and as the various stakeholders are, sit down and talk about the Transportation Management Plan, there are various improvements and changes that are done, and this is an example of one of the things that came out of a result of discussion among the stakeholders, the additional signs. So I make a motion to approve.
Any discussion? Call the question?
Yes, sir. This item is to authorize procurement of two laptop computers supporting hardware and software for remote connection to the Transportation Management Center Network, project number X, two thousand and five oh nine. Cumberland Area Traffic Cameras and Dynamic Message Signs deployment is an approved project in the traffic management, traffic signals, and planning component of the two thousand and sixteen S P L O S transportation improvement program. We request the Board of Commissioners authorize procurement of two laptop computers supporting hardware and software in an amount not to exceed five hundred, five thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-four cents for remote connection to the Transportation Management Center Network, project number X, two thousand and five oh nine, and further authorize the corresponding budget transaction.
Motion to approve? Any comments? Call the question? And the vote passes five to nothing. Number sixteen.
Yes, sir. Our final item is to authorize procurement of automatic vehicle location equipment for inclement weather vehicles to include required monthly operational expenses for inclement weather equipment and supply storage, project number X, two thousand and six oh five. Inclement weather equipment and supply storage is an approved project in the roadway improvements component of the two thousand and sixteen S P L O S transportation improvement program. We request the Board of Commissioners authorize the procurement of automatic vehicle location equipment for twenty inclement weather vehicles to include required monthly operational expenses at a cost not to exceed twenty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars for inclement weather equipment and supply storage, project number X, two thousand and six oh five.
Call the question? I'm sorry. Motion to approve?
Second.
Any comments? Call the question. And the motion passes five to nothing.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. All right, now we'll go to tab four, and this is the Cobb County Support Services Agency. Mr. Reed?
Morning, Chairman. My name is John Radha with Cobb County Property Management Department. Morning, Commissioners, Mr. Hankerson. Our first item is a two thousand and sixteen S P L O S item for the East Marietta Library. It's for an easement with the Marietta Board of Lights and Water for their maintenance access to a water, to, it's a vault, for the water valve, the water meter, and the backflow preventer. And the department recommends that the Board of Commissioners approve an easement in substantially similar form to the attached with Marietta Board of Lights and Water for installation and maintenance of water meters at the East Marietta Library, a two thousand and sixteen S P L O S project located at two thousand and fifteen Lower Roswell Road, Marietta, and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All right, we hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just, it's a little bit, for folks that are not familiar, I mean, this is in the county, it's a county project, but in this part of the county, the city of Marietta Board of Lights and Water provides water to the facility, and so what happens is they're putting, the city agency is putting stuff on county property, and so that's where this is coming from.
Any further discussion? Call the question? And the motion passes five to nothing. Number two.
Mr. Chairman, our second item is also two thousand and sixteen S P L O S. It's part of our equipment replacement, and we're going to replace two chillers at the State Court Building. Purchasing advertised for that, and there were two bidders, and we recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Dakin Applied in the amount of eighty-five thousand, forty dollars for the purchase of two replacement chillers for the State Court Building located at twelve East Park Square as part of the two thousand and sixteen S P L O S equipment replacement project. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute necessary documents.
Commissioner Rutherford?
I believe that's Commissioner Burl's now.
Oh.
Motion to approve is presented, sir.
Second.
Call the question? It says right here, you.
I understand that, sir.
That's me when I was at the jail.
All right, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tab six now. There's no further public comment.
I believe, Ms. Dance? Okay, then we'll go to tab seven. All right, I'd like to just briefly explain what we're doing in tab seven. There are a number of appointments and reappointments by the board. Some of them have to be approved by the board, some of them are just simply announcements. So what we've done is those appointments that have to be approved by the board, I will, I will read those out as my motion, and then those appointments that are being named with the board don't require vote approval, be made during the time that commissioners have for public comment. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following appointments and reappointments. And Ms. Cupid, Commissioner Cupid, appointment of Chandre Knight to the Public Library Board of Trustees. Commissioner Cupid's appointment of Kalon Mitchell to the Recreation Board. Commissioner Cupid's reappointment of Michael Jones to the Cemetery Preservation Commission. Commissioner Cupid's reappointment of Annette Hughes to the Region One Behavioral Health and Development Disabilities Planning Board. Commissioner Cupid's reappointment of Carolyn Turner to the Board of Tax Assessors. Commissioner Ott's reappointment of Bill Bodine to the Cemetery Preservation Commission, and Commissioner Ott's reappointment of Bill Carver to the Recreation Board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Yes, I'd like to recognize Carolyn Turner, who's here in the audience, who's being reappointed to the Board of Tax Assessors. Just want to thank you for your diligent service and look forward to you continuing to serve. Also want to recognize our former appointment to the Public Library Board, Michael Murphy, who's here in the audience, who I believe is moving on to much bigger and better things, but we appreciate your service on this board and your diligent care for those who, who utilize our libraries. Thank you.
I'd like to echo those sentiments to both those fine people. Thank you very much, Commissioner Cupid. No further discussion. I call the question? And the motion passes five to nothing. With that, I think we move on to tab eight, which is discussions, public comment by the various commissioners. So with that, I'll start with Commissioner Cupid.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Would like to thank District Four for your support in my reelection, and I'm looking forward to serving over the next four years. As part of this process, there are a number of reappointments to several, or new appointments to several boards and authorities, and I appreciate you entertaining the application process that we had so that we can vet talent throughout the district. And with that, we announced several, well, we voted on several appointments, but I also have several announcements to make on positions which did not need to be appointed, which I will read as follows. There is reappointment of Galt Porter to the Planning Commission for a four-year term to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. Reappointment of Toby Carmichael to the Animal Control Board for a four-year term to expire on twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty. Appointment of Monique Sheffield to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a four-year term to expire on twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty. This appointment will replace Murray Holman, who will continue to serve on this board, which will be shared in later comments. Reappointment of Diane Wilkerson to, and appointment of Sally Riddle and Angelo Brown to the Community Relations Council for a one-year term to expire on twelve thirty-one, two thousand and seventeen. Reappointment of Geraldine, and I want to back up to that last one, the one-year term to expire on twelve thirty-one, two thousand and seventeen, I believe, is just for Angelo Brown, not for the other appointments. Reappointment of Geraldine Aldridge to the Historic Preservation Commission for a four-year term to expire on twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty. Reappointment of Marta Stewart to the Home Builders Advisory Board for a four-year term to expire on twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty. Reappointment of Barry Krebs, and appointment of Herschel Chalk and Harvey Williams to Keep Cobb Beautiful for a four-year term to expire on twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty. Reappointment of Joel Coop, and appointment of Bob Corney, Carol Massey to the Neighborhood Safety Commission for a three-year term to expire on nine thirty, two thousand and nineteen. Appointments of Kenneth Jones, Roger Sanbo, and Lindsay Edwards to the One Percent Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax Citizens Oversight Committee, that's a tongue twister, for a four-year term to expire on twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty. Appointments of James Darden, Dania Apati, and Leslie Leon Bruton to the Transit Advisory Board. Mr. Darden and Ms. Apati will serve a four-year term to expire on twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty, and Mr. Bruton will serve a two-year term to expire on twelve thirty, excuse me, to expire on twelve thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen. Finally, reappointment, which is a joint appointment of Commissioner Ott and I of Dr. Wayne Blackstone to the Animal Control Board for a four-year term to expire twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty. And those are my appointments that I need to announce for this meeting. Outside of that, I do want to share that there will be a meeting this Thursday to continue our discussion of the design guidelines for Maybellton Corridors, and that will be held from six thirty to eight thirty at the South Cobb Community Center at six twenty Lyons Club Drive. Also, PAL, our Police Athletic League, has registration open for track, and the registration uniform fitting has been changed to today, actually, this evening, from seven to nine P M. at Cobb County Safety Village, and the registration costs are sixty dollars per child with a discount of a ten dollars for additional children, and you can find out more by visiting cobbcounty.org backslash PAL. Our Police Athletic League has done an outstanding job in training our young athletes in the dis- in training our young athletes in the district. They have gone on to gain several honors and medals nationally, and look forward to that momentum continuing in this next season. Finally, I'll share that there will be a workshop that will be held at Powder Springs First United Methodist Church to educate people on how to identify those who are at risk of committing suicide, and which is good because I believe January may be Mental Health Month. And this event will be held, however, next month on Saturday, February 18th, but space is limited. If you are interested, please call the church at 770-943-5130, or you can email my office and we can get you that information. Those are my announcements, and just want to share, congratulations, formerly Chairman Boyes. It's a pleasure to serve with you for your first 10 days, and looking forward to serving with you over the next four years.
Thank you for those kind words, and likewise.
Thank you.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few announcements that are coming up. It's a busy week and a busy month. Wanted to let everyone know that this Friday night at North Star Church, Brian Snickner, the Braves coach, will be speaking at the Altoona Baseball Dugout Club. It's going to be a fundraiser and a silent auction. If you're in the area, that should be a good speaker and a good thing to attend and support the dugout club for Altoona baseball. Also, Friday morning at 7:30, I will be attending along with the City of Acworth officials, a principal and legislative breakfast. It's where the principals and legislatures and the officials in the northwest part of the county get together and discuss issues that the legislature could have affecting both principals and local governing bodies. That's 7:30, Acworth City Hall. Remind everybody that next Monday is MLK Day in the Civic Center. The Cobb NAACP hosts a great event at the Cobb Civic Center. It's always a good event and a lot of talent there. There's also one at the City of Acworth, and the speaker there will be Vaughn Williams, who is the Athletic Director for KSU. So any one of those events would be great to attend on MLK Day. This afternoon, or starting at 11:30 at the KSU Center, will be the State of the City addressed by the Kennesaw Mayor, Derek Easterling, if you are in the area for that. And this Thursday is the ABA Lunch, and the guest speakers were going to be Jeff and Jen from Star 94. They couldn't make it, so they chose me. Not real sure what I'm willing to do to follow that up, but anyway, I'll be speaking at the Acworth Business Association this Thursday at 11:30 at North Star Church. And as always, we publish a newsletter every Friday and talks about projects in the district, road closures, et cetera. So please feel free to sign up for that. And we started a new segment called Zoning 101. If those of you are interested in zonings, we'll understand a little bit more of the process that we go through so that you can be well informed when something happens in your area. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Weatherford. Commissioner Burle?
Yes, I would first like to announce the appointment of Judy Williams as a District Three representative to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and that is effective immediately. She will replace Christie Trumbetti on the BZA, and I'd like to thank Christie for her many, many years of service. She's done a great job, and I'm very grateful for her dedication in the past. Judy has been on the BZA for a long time, and she brings a lot of expertise and knowledge in representing District Three, and I look forward to working with her. And her term will expire on December 31, 2018. And then I'd also like to appoint Judy Williams to replace Christie Trumbetti on the Planning Commission, representing District Three, and that will be effective March 1. And Christie has been invaluable to me on the Planning Commission as well, and I'd like to thank her for her many years of service. And I'd like to welcome you, Chairman, and say that so far I'm very impressed, and I look forward to working with you for at least two more years, if not more, hopefully more. But thank you for bringing us in the loop and meeting with us and being open and transparent. We appreciate that.
My pleasure.
Also, you have five days left to bring one for the chipper, recycle your Christmas tree. You can go to keepcobbbeautiful.org for more details and the locations of where you can drop off your tree. County facilities will be closed Monday in observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. holiday. And I believe the celebration that the NAACP and the county are doing is at the Turner Chapel this year, correct? Okay, at 10 o'clock?
Yes.
Okay. And also, I'd like to announce that next Thursday, next Wednesday, January 18th, the racetrack on Canton Road is having a grand reopening and ribbon cutting. And I'd like to invite the public to come. It's at 9:30 a.m., and please join us. The racetrack is located at 2337 Canton Road. And on a personal note, I'd like to extend my heartfelt sympathy to the family of Oga Woultering. Oga was killed on Friday in the tragic shooting at Fort Lauderdale Airport. She was a loving great-grandmother, grandmother, wife, mother, and a friend to many in the community and beyond. Our prayers are with her husband Ralph, her son Tim, and her family members and her extended family at Transfiguration Catholic Church. Please keep them in your prayers. Thank you.
Commissioner Ott, before I call on you, could we just have a moment of silence, a silent in our own way for the family of the, yes, parents. Parents, so we lost, we have a family member, a lady whose parents were involved in the shooting, and one of them died, and the other one is still in the hospital, and then, of course, Oga Woultering. So just a brief moment of silence, I think that would be appropriate. Thank you. Commissioner Ott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, welcome.
Thank you.
Careful what you wish for. I like, Commissioner Cupid would like to thank the citizens of District Two for allowing me to return and represent them for another four years. And like Commissioner Cupid, I have a really long list, which we have to do once every four years, so I'm just going to go through it. You just have to grin and bear. So I'm announcing the reappointment of Jim Fawcett to the Home Builders Advisory Board for a four-year term to expire December 31, 2020. Reappointment of Bill Carver and the appointment of Dee Gaye to the 1% SPOS Oversight Committee. I'm not going to try the whole. For a term to expire December 31, 2020. Reappointment of Larry Kay to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals for a term to expire on 12/31/2020. Reappointment of Brian Newsom to the Airport Advisory Board for a two-year term to expire on December 31, 2018. Reappointment of Patty Zachary to the Animal Control Board for a four-year term to expire on December 31, 2020. Appointment of Brian McDaniel to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a four-year term to expire on December 31, 2020, and that takes effect on February 1st. Reappointment of Frank Lutrell to the Electrical Advisory Board for a four-year term to expire December 31, 2020. Reappointment of Ben O'Callahan to the Heating and Air Conditioning Advisory Board for a four-year term to expire on December 31, 2020. Reappointment of Cal Dorch to the Historic Preservation Commission for a four-year term to expire on December 31, 2020. Reappointment of Jeff Gross, Denise Holly, and Felicia McDade to Keep Cobb Beautiful for a four-year term to expire on December 31, 2020. Appointment of Donald Towers to the Neighborhood Safety Commission for a three-year term to expire on September 30, 2019. Reappointment of Mike Terry to the Planning Commission for a four-year term to expire on December 31, 2020. Reappointment of Nick Marine to the Plumbing Advisory Board for a four-year term to expire on December 31, 2020. Reappointment of William Parker, Mike McNapp to the Transit System Advisory Board for a four-year term to expire on December 31, 2020. And then just a couple of announcements. I hope that everyone had a Happy New Year, and 2017 is going to bring some great things to the county, specifically in District Two for the residents. Many of the road projects will be complete, and yes, that means the pipeline project. And we now have the Chairman going through it every day, so I hear from him too, besides my wife. But that should be completed at the end of the year. Also, as the Braves Stadium project moves towards completion, many of the road projects around that will be completed. We have basically 95 days left till opening day. On a note, this past, I know the kids at school that are not in school today are not happy about Bill Shelton, but we all love Bill Shelton. And I want to thank Cobb DOT, specifically Bill Shelton and his staff for the many hours of hard work for the past five days, preparing for the snow and working through the nights, making sure that the roads are clear. So, and then I want to congratulate Walton High School wide receiver Dominic Blaylock. He earned MVP honors at the U.S. Army All-American Bowl National Combine. He's a sophomore and is considered the nation's number-three wide receiver in the class of 2019, and already has 33 scholarship offers. So great job, and look forward to an exciting 2017 season. Go Raiders! And finally, what? I'm not there yet. If I don't say it, he will.
I meant to separate you two again.
I also would like to thank the 30-plus volunteers who are members of the Braves Advisory Board that met on Friday. I appreciate their willingness to step up. And yes, it is an orange day. Go Clemson!
Oh. Well, I also have the privilege of making some announcements this morning. I'm going to be appointing Murray Holman to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a four-year term to expire on December 31, 2020. And I'm appointing Ms. Thea Powell to the Planning Commission for four years, being on March 1 of this year, to expire on December 31, 2020. It's a great sadness that I read in the newspaper that Chief Hauser is leaving us. This is a man who's been committed to public service, and more importantly, to public safety in this county for decades. We're going to greatly miss him. He's been a tremendous, tremendous model and representative of this county, and I've told him that I wish him nothing but the best in his future endeavors. So of course, that will start the process for new chief, but right now, it's time to honor and remember Chief Hauser, and I'm sure he'll be doing that in the days ahead. I also want to echo the sentiments of the staff here. As I have been going and getting orientations, briefings from the staff, not just the county staff, but also from the constitutional officers, I have to say, without any reservation, they are an incredible group of men and women leading this county. We are so blessed to have these dedicated professionals, which is why I made the pay and compensation study on my number-one issue coming out of the chocks. These are, we are so well-served by these dedicated servants, and I just want to make sure that I never take them for granted. As we saw this weekend, when you see great things happen and you're not impacted by them, you take for granted that it happened because it's magic. It happens because of the hard work and professionalism of the staff, particularly Mr. Wogus and the county manager, making sure all weekend long, as I saw as I dropped in, that we have public safety at your forefront. We kept the roads clear as much as possible. But just as importantly, we got the word out to the public, and they cooperated incredibly by staying home. That was the perfect storm, but it came out to be perfect weather because everybody worked on this together. So I want to extend my thanks to everybody, both from the public and this county staff for making this an incredible weekend. I've only been in office 10 days, but the first two weekends, I had, we had a major thunderstorm last weekend and an ice storm this weekend. What can I say? I can't wait for spring. As I look forward to working with the Board, we have hard work. This is hard work. I have to get, you know, I have to make sure that I keep the Board members informed. I'm committed to that. I've made, said so many times, there will be no surprises for me. When they come into a meeting, when they come to a vote, they should generally expect to know how I'm going to vote. And I'm committed to doing that to make sure that this openness, transparency extends to them right after, to the citizens, to the Board members, because they represent these citizens. This is a noble cause, but it involves a lot of effort by your Board members. They may consider this a part-time job out in the public, but this is not a part-time job. They all work. They all work. I can assure you more than 20 hours a week to represent you, and it has been a pleasure working with them. And we will not all have days of five-nothing votes. I expect that. But that's the nature of our democracy. It works best when there is tension and we have disagreements. But we all want to make sure that when we have these issues, they're all out there, and we don't vote until we've had all the facts before us so we can make an informed decision. And I am committed to doing that every single day because I owe that to these Board members who have done an outstanding job of representing this county. The, we're going to move ahead on the Braves. This Advisory Board, again, I realize there's been some confusion there because of the alacrity which we implemented this thing, but I just want to let everybody know here that it's a complimentary effort and part of what the county manager is doing as our county rep to make sure that we have a successful opening on April 14th. I want to make sure everybody's at the table. As I saw during my campaign, there are a lot of organizations, agencies, businesses here who aren't quite sure what we're doing. So I just wanted to expand the nature of our communication effort. This is strictly an advisory board. This is strictly an advisory board. They have no directive authority. Any input that they have to the county has to be done through Commissioner Ott, who I selected as the chairman of this commission because the Braves project is in this district. So if he has any information that he thinks we should be doing, he has to work with the county manager on that. So I think that by broadening our universe of people that are involved, everybody knows what we're trying to do. We'll all work to the common effort, and I've seen that already with all the people I've talked to. We all want to make a success. I just want to make sure everybody's at the table. Finally, I want to thank the county voters for the privilege of serving as their chairman. You know, a little more than a year ago, I was a lonely figure on snowy roads on icy days, knocking on doors. But here I am, a year later, on snowy days with icy roads, sitting as your chairman. And I cannot tell you what an honor and a privilege it is to serve this county. And I guarantee you, I'll give you 100% of what's part of my DNA of public service because that's all I am. I'm a servant leader. I look forward to serving the public. I look forward every day to working with these Commissioners because they're your Commissioners, and they're doing a great job, and I'm just honored to be part of this Board. So with that, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Any comment? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Hankerson. I apologize for omitting you.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, but again, I apologize. Again, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Second? Any discussion? This meeting is adjourned.